The agenda for tonight. One of the council members have the agenda table for you.
I made the motion to adopt the second, two thousand twenty-four agenda.
We've got a motion here, second.
I second.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? Okay, all approved, raise your hand. David, is your, I'm getting my manager's mic on.
It doesn't work, I don't need it.
Okay, uh, now the next item on the agenda is to adopt the minutes of our August twenty-sixth meeting. While you council members have opportunities to read through minutes. And if so, do you see any corrections, additional contractions? If I have a chance to read the minutes? You ready, Jay? So I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
I made the motion to approve the minutes for August two thousand, I mean, August twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
I second.
We've got a motion, second, we have a, any discussion? All in favor of adopting the minutes that you have them, raise your hand. And now as our, our next item on the agenda is to vote on Woodbury Village Bears. As I mentioned in our public hearing, we're going to wait and do this vote at this point. We're waiting on one of the council members to be, we want all the council members to be present. So now we, you've all heard the discussion, we've had this, our third, our third public hearing concerns this project. And so now it is time to vote. And I just want to remind the council, there are about four ways you can vote. You can vote, you can vote to approve. You can vote, you can vote to approve with conditions. You can vote to deny. Or you can vote to table the decision for a future date, a certain date and time, for thirty days. So those, all the four votes you can make. Vote to approve, vote to approve with condition, vote to deny, and vote to table. So what is the wishes of the council, I need a motion.
So what, uh, so your vote to table, is it gonna change anything?
No, it's not gonna change a thing, it's gonna delay it.
Well, I would like to make the motion to table it for thirty days.
Okay.
I second the motion.
All right, we've got a motion, second, to table the decision of the council concerning the Woodbury Village project. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of tabling for thirty days? Raise your hand. Raise your hand if you're going, if you vote to table. Got three, vote to table, vote, I can vote.
Aye.
Vote what?
Uh, if it ain't gonna change nothing, they're gonna vote ahead, they're gonna live. And they don't change the, you can't stop them building, they voted with the Bears.
So you're? Yes, vote for the Bears.
Yeah.
And we've got three vote to table the Bears request. And we've got one vote to move forward with the Bears question. Okay, so the decision of the council is to table the decision for thirty days.
I have my point of discussion.
Okay.
Our meeting's coming is on October twenty-eighth, so they might be looking more than thirty days.
Okay, we'll make a, we can make a date certain, yeah.
Meeting's tomorrow.
Yeah, we can make a date certain. We can be out, what's our next date for the council meeting?
October twenty-eighth.
Okay, October twenty-eighth, at seven o'clock, this will be back, will be on our agenda.
We'll go back to six o'clock.
Uh, six, yeah, six, yeah, go back six o'clock. Our regular scheduled meeting time. Okay, we'll move on with our next item. Next item on the agenda is, uh, mayor's update, I don't have anything to add tonight. The next agenda is, uh, Department of Forest. Mayor Chief Jackson, you have anything?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, just two quick things, um, just to let y'all know, we, uh, we did hire recently a Hispanic officer. So we do have a Spanish-speaking officer that is in the department now. That was something that I kinda saw we needed because I started to see small influx of some Hispanic residents. Yeah, this mic is messed up. Um. Small, I started to see a small influx of Hispanic residents, um, in the city downtown, and, um, a few weeks ago. And so I said, you know, I said, we need to address this, so we will have someone in the city that we'd be able to communicate effectively with them. So we have hired a Hispanic officer, and even outside of police work, if there's any issues or anything that, um, any of the citizens need where they may need assistance with, um, Spanish speaking, give us a call, and, um, if you're working that day, we can send them out to assist on that. The only other thing I have is, when everybody gets a chance, uh, we have completed the police memorial. It's right over there by the bathroom, so if you get an opportunity, just take a chance, you know, get a chance to go over there and look at the police memorial, honoring some of the past officers that have, um, passed away that worked in the city of Woodbury. I am still seeking, seeking names of some other officers, if anyone knows any, um, you can submit those names. It has to be an officer that passed away under good standing as a police officer and under good standing before their life, you know, expired. So if you have those names and the, and the year that they passed away, or maybe a contact to a family member, so I can get their approval, just to make sure it's okay with that, I can add their names to the wall for that, that's all I have.
Did you have a, a police call, need to circle which?
Um, right now, we're gonna, we're gonna table that, the two, um, the two officers I had, they both rescinded, so that's something that we'll have to revisit in the future.
Okay, all right. I would encourage all of you to go by and look at the police exhibit that, uh, Chief Jackson put together. It's real impressive, so I just ask you to stop by there, look at it, it's right in the, I'll tell you right when we leave room. He did a good job with that, um, display. Let's see, we don't have a report from, from Public Works Director, we don't have a report from, uh, Ward and Sewer. Uh, David, do you have anything for plans, his own?
Nothing that hasn't already been discussed.
Okay. Uh, City Club, Deandra, do you have anything?
Yes, um, there seems to have been a bit of confusion about the war deals. The council did vote to have all accounts caught up by December, but I think within that, a lot of people took that as, okay, I don't have to make a payment until December. That's not the case. We're still asking you to still make monthly payments and to have your account caught up by December. Um, and I was also in discussion with the council about changing the city hall hours. And Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday will still be eight to four, and then on Wednesdays will be eight to twelve.
Okay, uh, we need here a motion to change our office hours, as Deandra laid out this.
I made.
Deandra, does it start October and autumn, or when?
Yeah, it'll start October the first of October.
I make the motion to change the city hall hours, um, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday will be eight to four, and on Wednesday from eight to twelve, starting October first.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to that, change our office hours.
I made the motion to change our office hours.
I second.
I second. Okay, we got a motion. David made a motion. Carol, Carol's second the motion. Uh, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of changing our office hours, uh, raise your hand. Okay, approved. Do you have anyone here from the Historic Preservation Committee? Okay, about from the business forum? All right, the Events Committee? Anybody here, okay?
Hi, my name's Elise Moser, I'm here on behalf of the Events Committee, Sunny is out of town, so I'm just gonna give y'all a quick update of what we've got coming up. Um, our first event that's coming up on October thirty-first is the trunk-or-treat. And we would like to move it from where it was last year, which was the parking lot right out here, to the one-way section of Duran Street, so that we can have designated parking, and then the trunk-or-treat in a different location, so that people can set up their cars. From what I understood, from what was explained to me, I haven't been here that long, but there was confusion last year on people parking versus who was doing the trunk-or-treat, and they ran out of space. So there was a low turnout for the people who were actually doing the trunk-or-treat. So this way, it expands the space where people can set up their vehicles, to actually set up their trunks and decorate, and have other people come in, and then the parking can be up here. So that's the first thing that we wanted to do. And we're seeking approval just to move it from the parking lot over to Duran Street, just the one-way section.
What is the item?
Um, it is from five to seven P M., same hours as last year. Um, the next event that's coming up after that is the Christmas Parade on December fifth, which is a Thursday, and that will be from, that will start at six P M., and then after the parade, there will be the tree lighting at the flagpole on Main Street. And we need, I believe we need approval to, to do that event as well as the city event, both of those events.
I, I think it needs to remain in the parking lot area, because if we're closing off the one straight, one-way street, I mean, you gotta stop the cars from going that way. Um, I think it should be here in the parking lot, and like, they park, sometimes they are parking around there at the bank, going to take the kids to each, I think it's more safer to have it in one section in the parking lot, instead of blocking, we have to block the road off, so they have to do a detour to go.
Right, but it's only blocking it off at one end, um, since it is just the one-way section. And the event, just by nature of the event, people would be parking their cars in that area to block it off anyway. Um, instead of having, instead of having the, sorry, instead of having the, the parking lot where it, it tends to get confusing, where people come in, they park, but they aren't participating in the event, they're not handing out candy. So what ended up happening was a lot of different, there were cars intermixed with the people who were decorated, and there wasn't as much cohesion of everybody who was doing the trunk-or-treat versus people who were just parked. And this way, it provides an event area, um, that is separate from parking. And it also helps to include the rest of the businesses that are staying open to participate in the trunk-or-treat, and it doesn't isolate the trunk-or-treat from the rest of the community.
From my understanding, because I have participated several times when they have the, I mean, I, I haven't seen anywhere it was causing what you're saying, it caused like the cars parking, I didn't see anything, I saw each car with that parade, all the children, the parents walking their children in each car. They did go to the businesses, go to the new trunk-or-treat, so I didn't see any, the congestion that you're saying, I didn't, I didn't see that, I saw the parking lot, tons of cars, each car had it, and each children, it was safe for the parents to walk their children to each location, and then they also went to the business, I didn't see what you're saying about this. So I, me first, I think it should remain here in the parking lot, um, it's more safer that way. Um, because even if it is a one-way street, but you still see people coming another way than they're supposed to come, so we just can't block the road off, and the cars not coming along.
Okay, the other thing that we want to put out there is that we are looking for a lot more participants. So last year, there were six decorated vehicles, and this year, we're hoping to get twenty, and we've had commitments from more than six already. So we want to make sure that we are accommodating for the event to grow, and it is a larger space. So I'm not saying that there wasn't confusion, I don't know I wasn't here last year, um, but it is just an opportunity for the event space to be a little larger, so that we can accommodate maybe more, um, like, if there's a fire truck coming, the ambulance coming, police cars, and other businesses from around the area, not just the city of Woodbury, can bring vehicles as well, and residents. So it's a larger space that doesn't have to be dedicated to parking, and the parking can remain separate from the actual event. I think that was the goal.
Any other comment, Captain?
I think one solution could be to put up signs out front that the cars in the parking lot are only, should be only cars that are participating in the trunk-or-treat. And then people can park in those other areas that you suggested.
The, I was suggesting using this parking lot for the parking for the event. And otherwise, people are parking all around and not in one central location. So it, it just provides a little bit, like, a parking place for the event, and then the event location, instead of it all being in one.
I agree with Councilwoman Hartnett about the event being in the parking lot, I think it, it would be safer, I participated or I attended, uh, last year, and I didn't see any issues either. Um, I think one problem also, I'm not really envisioning, uh, what you're saying, so maybe if, as of right now, what I see is it being in the parking lot, but possibly if you can get us a visual, maybe that will help.
Like, right now, can you do a visual of how we want to lock it off?
Well, no, not right now, like, if you could send us something tomorrow or something like that.
And then the other part was about the parade, about having that on December fifth with the tree lighting. But that was a great, a good date for, for the event.
Well, what time does that start, six?
Uh, yes, that starts at six.
I know there was a lot of discussion about the football game, I'm not a football person, so can somebody tell me when's the big football game?
The reason why we picked December, uh, December fifth, which is a Thursday, as opposed to a Friday or a Saturday, was because of football. So we didn't want to interfere with the high schools' games, because we have already secured a band for the parade, and we didn't want to, um, interfere with college football, because there's a big game on Saturday. So we wanted to hold it on Thursday, and we also reached out to other cities, they have theirs on weekdays as well, and had good turnouts. So we were hoping to just kind of piggyback off of that and have a couple days in a row where there are fun parades in some of the small towns.
It'd be good if all the cities could coordinate the parade to be on the same day of the week, of course, I know that might be impossible to do.
Yeah, just because we gotta have, we gotta share so many bands, there's always so few bands.
Which city do you have that has the year of the week, do you know?
I believe Springfield has theirs during the week, and I think that Manchester does too.
It is on Friday.
On Friday? Okay.
Oh, no, it's on Saturday, I'm thinking about the, oh, I don't got it, I don't got it, yeah.
What's the, what's the council, what do you think about having this on Thursday? The Christmas, Christmas parade?
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
So I'm kind of, I, where I moved from in Lynette, um, there's five cities within the county, in Chambers County, and of course, they all did communicate, and it was one big parade. And they did it on a Thursday night, and it's been a tradition for probably thirty years, if not more. And what Elise and Sunny and myself are trying to do are, is get traditions back in the town and come up with dates, so that we stick with them every year. Um, last year, the parade changed two or three times, it was canceled, it was this, it was that. So what we're trying to do is come up with dates, um, that do not interfere with football season, and that is the S E C championship game that following Saturday, I believe, or the second. So we're trying to create dates that we have something every year, and we leave it on that date. So December the fifth, um, the first Thursday of every month, it's kind of like my tradition that I do at my store, I have Christmas open house every year, and I have for fifteen years at my store, and it just, it's a note in people's minds that Resurrect has open house the first weekend of November. It's just something that people put on their calendars, and it would be the same for the parade. And I think back to the whole trunk-or-treat thing, is like Fitzgerald Farms wants to bring a big semi truck and give out pumpkins. Um, so that's kind of what we were trying to move it to that one way over there, because Jeff Cooper at the print place has let us use his parking lot there, and it kind of just makes sense to let the trunk-or-treaters pull in his parking lot and walk up and down that street with games and stuff like that. We're just trying to build things for the community, and it's kind of, we're limited as to how much you can build it here in the parking lot. So it's, we're trying to make things bigger and do a lot more for the community, it's just, you're, you don't have enough space here to keep building it with fire trucks and stuff like that, as far as the trunk-or-treat thing.
That's true, I think it's a good idea, myself, but.
We're just trying to build things up, and, you know, the, to make traditions, get traditions back in Woodbury, and involve the whole community. And you're limited on space here, and you're limited on weekends in December to do the parade and all.
Okay, let's see, get a motion for the Christmas parade. You want to have a motion to do it on the October, December fifth? Or any other motion?
December third, yeah.
December fifth, or third? December the fifth or third?
So the Trump Championship game, you said?
Yes.
Well, we can make the motion to approve for December the fifth. For future, we have to come make a visit from forward. Cause we also have to consider when the school having anything coming up in the next year. So we're not going to just put a permanent date on it.
Okay, so for December the fifth this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more to add for the motion?
I made the motion to approve the, well, hold on, she got a question.
What were those times for?
December the fifth at six P M. And then right after, we would follow with the tree lighting and the light bulbs.
Okay.
We've got a motion, we've got a second.
I'm sorry, do we have electricity at the black bulb for the light?
We did. Hot cotton or either Jeff will let us use this power.
Are the kids be going to school that Friday?
They would be going to school that Friday, yes. But the event would wrap up. I mean, it starts at six. It's a short parade. There would be a tree lighting and that would be, people would be walking around for a little while after that. I don't think it would be going past nine o'clock at all.
I know in the past, we used to have tree lightings. They were like on Thursday nights because I remember coming up here and singing at them. And we'd be up here all set up in the churches and bringing their kids choirs and all. So I mean, to me, that's not a big issue because we did have tree lightings on weeknights before. We're just adding the parade into the tree lighting.
The problem that we're running into waiting till the last minute to come up with these events is just like the Christmas parade. Everyone is already booked out for, you know, this year. Bands, all of that good jazz is already done for this year. So we need to get a date, whether it be the first Thursday of December or whatever that is. And we need to stick to it for the future so that we can go on and contact these people to go on and get on their schedule for next year. Or we're going to be in the same boat we've been for the last several years and the parade's not going to be anything to it because we've waited till last minute. It also helps with advertising. If you can buy one banner that says the first Thursday of December and that just sticks for the year, you don't have to keep buying new advertising every year.
Well, the city, the city used to be on the schedule of having the Christmas parade on like the first Saturday in December. But then we didn't have it for years until last year. So that's where the gap comes in. I don't think it's a matter of waiting until the last minute. There was just a gap, years of not having the event. So that's where the gap is.
Motion and second, then we'll have further discussion if we need it.
I made the motion to have the Christmas parade December the fifth at six o'clock. And further discussion at a later date for future.
Motion, now a second. Need a second?
A second.
Okay, we've got a motion, second. Any more discussion?
Want to be dark at six o'clock? In December?
Yes, in the dark at six o'clock.
Parade's going to be going dark? The parade's going to be in the dark? That's another problem.
Cause on Saturday, it's being two o'clock. And see, if you do it December the fifth at two o'clock, the kids are still in school and people are working right all day. And it does get dark at, like Mr. Ercu said, at six o'clock.
So we perhaps do the tree lighting on one night and the parade on another? Parade on a Saturday and a tree lighting on a Thursday?
I, that's, that is feasible, but it's not ideal. Because you want to have one big event for everybody to come to. It would be difficult, especially if you did it in the same week, to get people to come out twice. That, that would just be a challenge, especially if you're doing one on Saturday, one on Sunday, or one on Thursday, one on Saturday. If we had it all at one time, it also, it just helps people remember when it is and whether or not the event is worth going to.
Okay, y'all planning on having any, the day of the school?
We do have one band lined up.
Until ten at six o'clock.
Yes. And we're also, it's an open invitation for groups to make floats, to, you know, decorate a boat and take it down Main Street. We've got, we're putting out an application for people to be able to come and be in the parade.
Well, as Mr. Ercu said about the darkness, at six o'clock, you're not going to be able to see.
Okay, it's dark at seven thirty-two.
So what now?
Seven thirty-two, it's dark.
A lot of cities do it in the dark, you know? Um, because like a lot of the cars that decorate these create some lights. Like I know like Warm Springs, theirs is always in the dark.
And we've done parades in other cities before it starts, before the sun goes down. But by the time you get to the end of the parade, it's dark. And then the tree lighting is immediately after that.
Okay, we've got a motion, second. Any more discussion? All in favor of having a Christmas parade on December the fifth at six o'clock? Raise your hand. Six o'clock. December the fifth.
Okay, and then for the trunk or treat? We're not going to move it or we'll just talk about that later.
Later time, cause as we're looking at the safe, I saw the kids. Cause even if you block the road off, we cannot, we're not going to block the road off from traffic because that's the only, actually, only way you can come into, get up, come to the Main Street from Drum and Dare to, to Duran. So, and then kids is out there running around, some, a kid may get hit. So I think that's dangerous. So as of right now, unless we, I found another place or something, we'll be, um, sit off.
Then the last thing is I just wanted to announce that we are planning to do a chili cook-off next year. Details to follow, but we're planning for that to be in February. And so we're going to be looking for people to participate in that as well. And we are also, we're looking for people to come and decorate things, decorate floats for the parade and to decorate for the trunk or treat. The first, for those who decorate, there are prizes. For those who decorate their cars, there's also, their first bucket of candy would be provided to them so that we can make sure that everybody who wants to participate can come and that there's no barriers to participation.
And if the council's cleared, then we will have trunk or treat again this year in the parking lot. Okay. Thank you. Okay, which area development authority, is there a report from the development authority? Okay, keep ready.
We're doing our report a little different this month. I'd like to start by just kind of giving an update on the doctor's office building. For those of you who are not familiar, the doctor's office building is kind of across that way where the doctor is located, obviously. And that was something that was brought up at the last council meeting. So we kind of want to just go over some quick bullet points with you to kind of give you the backstory and history on that. Back in probably two thousand eighteen, the development authority worked with the city and council at that time to try to bring a doctor back into our area. It's very important for a city to have a doctor in the area, a local doctor. And we had been with that one for several years at that point. So as we worked on that, we ended up, in two thousand eighteen, we rented the building to Scott Callaway with Phoenix Mobility. He rented the entire building payable to the development authority. This was agreement that was made with the city at that time. In March of two thousand nineteen, Scott Callaway agreed to rent only half the building in order for us to bring in the doctor and put them in the other half of the building, which was already suited and furnished and everything for doctors, obviously. In March of two thousand nineteen, the current mayor and myself approved to negotiate the rents with both tenants. At this time, it was agreed that the development authority would receive the rent from the B side of the building or Scott Callaway. And the city would agree, excuse me, receive the rent from the A side of the building from the doctor's office. So, and then in March of two thousand nineteen, the city council also voted to turn over all the unused city property to us to help sell that property. In May of two thousand nineteen, the development and Scott, development authority and Scott Callaway entered into a lease agreement for the B side of the building for five hundred dollars a month payable to the development authority. By June of two thousand nineteen, an agreement had been made with the Warm Springs Medical Center to rent side B of the building for seven hundred a month payable to the city. Since September two thousand nineteen, Warm Springs Medical Center has kept a doctor in that office building and provided a much-needed service to the Woodbury community. I know my, myself and my family use them as needed. I'm sure some of you have used them as well. So it was great to have them here. In two thousand nineteen, we've replaced the H VAC unit on the B side of the building for sixty-eight hundred dollars. Currently, the building is in need of updates again. And we went, we actually made an offer to the city to purchase the doctor's office building from the development authority, which would help the city as it gives them cash. It would also give us a steady income for rental as well. And it would also alleviate the city from the burden of upkeep and maintenance on the building as we would be responsible for at that point. We continue to make a good faith effort to work with the city to promote economic development. Some of the minor things that we have done lately, and I say minor because I think our investment on the facade grant program is just dropping a bucket compared to what the investors have actually put into it. But we have rented several facade grants for the businesses here in town. And I know this is too small for everybody to see, but we have a little slide here of what the buildings used to look like and what they look like today as the developers have come in and invested their time and money to put buildings back to use and business, bring business into the city. And we've been a small part in helping with that. Wish we had a copy for everybody, but I apologize, there's not enough to go around. But as of right now, we have awarded twelve facade grants to the downtown businesses, totaling over seventeen thousand in grant money. This was matched by over a hundred and twenty-seven thousand by private investments as well. So I know you've seen the improvements going on in Woodbury and we'd like to continue with those improvements. And we'd like to continue to work with the city and have a healthy relationship to, to make progress and to make something we can all be proud of. So that's an update. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Hey, I got a question. What about someone that wrote down houses around here? Can we get the development authority to try to get them bulldozed over? Cause a lot of the tenants don't have money to get them pushed over and towed off and clean the city up?
That's not really our area to enforce the code. However, we have started looking outside the box and looking further than the downtown area to look for investment opportunities. And that is something that we brought up with some of the houses around that really need to be taken down and replaced with newer homes.
Exactly, because a lot of homeowners don't have the money to get them pushed over. However, you know, cleaned up and just sitting. And I'm quite sure if the city would, the development authority would offer help to all the abandoned houses around here, especially on the other side, that the private city can, you know, look a little better.
Okay, appreciate it. We'll look into it. Thank you. Anything else?
Okay, next item on the agenda is, this item was tabled from last meeting. Unfinished business, tabled item to terminate intergovernmental agreement with Millwood County to provide building inspections. What does the council want to do?
I want to make a motion to terminate.
Okay, got a motion. Okay, who wants to make a motion?
I made the motion to terminate an intergovernmental agreement with Millwood County.
Motion, now a second.
I'll say it today.
Okay, we've got a motion, now a second. Any more discussion? Okay, why do you want to terminate the agreement?
Well, number one, as we have stated, that Millwood County do not have Woodbury best interest in mind. Also, Millwood County do not let our city clerk know any information. She has found it on the website. Anything that Millwood County, I would hesitate. And as I said, last month again about things are coming in that Millwood County allows it to come in and you don't, Woodbury don't find out. Everybody done got money from it. As again, I stated from last month, the movie came into Woodbury. They went to Greenville. Greenville failed for whatever reason and she said that, well, the thing, she, she don't know how it passed by her. But anyway, and everybody, like I said, businesses made money, everybody set Woodbury, but they used, they used the parking lot for Woodbury. So they knew they was in Woodbury's city limit just as well. But anyway, they're not, they don't have Woodbury best interest in mind. And I have talked to you several times. You supposed to been talking to Ms. Cassandra and they still have filed anything concerning any businesses. I mean, which is a website there, that's okay. But if anybody go up there to get any business license or get anything from Millwood County, Millwood County do not, do not let Ms. Deondra know. Even now, Millwood County sent citizen to the city hall to, to give them, give them the answer to bring, to bring up here to the clerk. That's not business.
Okay, I've talked to Cassandra. And she says all we got to do is ask her to send copies of inspection officer. I want to wait that we talk, until we discuss this item before we terminate the agreement. Cause the county has also agreed as part of this intergovernmental agreement to do exactly what Mr. Redmond mentioned, to tell his house, condemn the house.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor, but also she, it also, this is not the first time she have been asked to, uh, asked to let Ms. Deondra know what's going on. Every time we bring this up, there's, there is an answer that we get, that they, what they, what they can do, how they can do it, when they gonna do it, but they never get that. She never, she still do not let Ms. Deondra know. It's not anything that they're not doing, but as Woodbury, we need to know what's going on. Instead of got to chase her down to find out what's going on. And every, wherever anybody can, I mean, can do, it could be done, it could be done. But any of the building permits and stuff need to be held, need to be done by the city. When you get a building permit, and it has always been in the past, that they came to the city hall to get a building permit. When, you know, some people are not able at the time to do their work or whatever, able to get to Greenville, to get a building permit. So, I mean, it's, that's one of the reasons too. I mean, but like I said, we always discuss, I mean, even now to, to the building code. I mean, we just been having a problem that I think that they lacking when it comes to Woodbury.
Any other council members want to add to that?
Hey, Major, had you written a code for?
Uh, we have somebody that is, could be considered to go to somebody else.
That's what he was waiting on to us to give him.
I have somebody that's just going to go.
Okay. Any more comment? Right, we got a motion to terminate the intergovernmental agreement. We did get a second here, did we?
Yes, we did, we just.
Okay, got a motion, second. All in favor of terminating the intergovernmental agreement with Millwood County? Raise your hand. Okay, we'll have to give them thirteen votes before we do that. All right, next item, which was tabled from last meeting is increase internet fee. What's?
I made the motion that we increase the internet fee.
For residential customers, it can be fifty dollars a month. For commercial would be a hundred and fifty. With this, we are also, the city will be taking over the installation. So those fees will be dropped. They were two hundred dollars for install. It will be a hundred dollars for residential and it will remain the two hundred for commercial.
Okay, got a motion to raise the internet fees to fifty dollars for residential, a hundred and fifty dollars for commercial, here's Sammy.
I'll say it in the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion, second. Is there any more discussion?
They want to go to fit. Go to fit, isn't it?
Next building. Okay, so, is there any more discussion? All in favor of raising these internet fees? Raise your hand. Okay, we'll do a start. The next building, we will increase internet fee. So another tabled item is doctor's building rent. I remember we had a discussion about this last month. And I would like to table this again because I have not finished my research on those questions that we got.
Also, you asked me to look into it. Deondra provided me some documents and then a few days after the meeting, the authority provided me with even more documents. And with other stuff going on, I just don't look at it yet. But I will look at it and give you my thoughts prior to the next meeting.
Okay. So do we have a motion to table this item until next meeting?
I made a motion to double table.
Second. Second, to table.
I second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of tabling this item, doctor's building rent? Raise your hand. Okay, if you name a vote. And I'll come down to new business, and this is going to require a little bit of explanation. Okay, uh, we have a problem I was talking about. It's not legal. Uh, this council has nothing to do with this done twenty nineteen. So tonight, we need to impose a moratorium on all zoning cases for one hundred and eighty days. I'm going to read this resolution. I'm not going to read all the references that Scott put in here, about two things below it. I'm just trying, trying to read the specific points and the important points. A resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Woodbury, Georgia, enacting a moratorium to bar acceptance of all rezoning applications for one hundred and eighty days to provide for severability, to provide for an adoption date, an effective date, and for other purposes. Therefore, it is now resolved by the city council of the city of Woodbury, Georgia as follows. Findings of fact. The mayor and council of the city of Woodbury hereby make the following findings of fact. It appears that the city's zoning orders, including the official zoning map, requires review and updating by the city of Woodbury as it relates to all zoning classification for the city. A moratorium on pending and future zoning and rezoning applications of all zoning districts, review and approval of pending and future residential subdivision flats, and review and approval of pending and future residential and commercial site development plans is reasonably calculated to assess development trends in city of Woodbury to prepare for adoption of amendments to the zoning orders for the city of Woodbury and for evaluation and city's ability to support and protect development through current and future land use planning. It is necessary and in the public interest to delay for a reasonable period of time the establishment of any new instances of zoning or rezoning for property to ensure that the design, development, and location of the same are consistent with the long-term planning of the city. The interest of the public necessitate the city exercising its police power by enacting a moratorium for health, safety, morals, and general welfare purposes by means which are reasonable and not undue oppressive. And the city's ongoing revision of the zone, of its zoning orders, particularly its official zoning map and review of service demands require the cessation of the acceptance, review inherent on all zoning applications and residential subdivision flats. The mayor and council do hereby enact a moratorium to commence upon the enactment of this resolution to bar review and hearings on all zoning and rezoning applications, to bar acceptance of all zoning or rezoning applications, and to bar review of all residential and commercial site development plans. The duration of this moratorium shall be until the city adopts a revision of the city of Woodbury zoning orders or until expiration of one hundred and eighty days from the date of adoption of this resolution, whichever first comes, occurs. No review or hearing on any zoning or rezoning application will take place. And no application for zoning or rezoning seeking to, to zone or rezon profit to another use shall take place or be accepted by the city. This moratorium shall be effective as of the date. This moratorium shall be effective as of the date and time of adoption of this resolution. The moratorium shall have no effect upon property previously zoned or rezoned or planted. This provision will not prevent a property owner that has previously zoned or rezoned property. Or has an approval final subdivision flat to obtain the development and construction permits. Any person or entity who believes it has a vested right in friendly don by this resolution. May petition for a hearing before the mayor and council. Such petition shall contain the name, address, and phone number of the petitioner. A survey flat signed and sealed by a surveyor registered and licensed state of Georgia. Legal restriction of the property affected. A writing stating the basis upon which the petitioner believes it has vested rights. And is deserving of an exemption from this moratorium. Including any facts or circumstances or supporting documentation which the petitioner feels substantiates its claim. Such petition shall be submitted to the city clerk after review. Petition shall be scheduled for hearing before the mayor and council after providing at least ten days advance notice. To the petition. It is hereby declared to be the intention of the mayor and council that all section, paragraph, sentences, clauses, and phrases. Of this resolution are or were upon enactment believed by the mayor and council to be fully valid, enforceable, and constitutional. This resolution adopted this day of twenty twenty four. City of Woodbury, Georgia. Okay, um, so we're imposing a moratorium because of a issue we have with our zoning map. The city council had nothing to do with this. This occurred in twenty nineteen. We've got a problem. We've got to resolve it. It's gonna take a while to resolve this problem, so that's why we are imposing this moratorium. Now, this moratorium does not affect. The advocate that we just heard from tonight. The advocate has already been. But they're not affected by this moratorium. Okay, need to get a motion second. Then we'll have a discussion among the council. I hear a motion that we adopt this resolution for this zoning moratorium.
Make a motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a motion second to adopt this zoning moratorium. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, the mor- moratorium is duly adopted. And it goes into effect tonight. Alright, to the next. Now we have the next item on the agenda is Mr. Adrian Revel. Represents a straight grill, which is his. Business. So now, Mr. Revel, we'll turn it over to you. Or your attorney.
I'll just turn it off. Um, good evening, council, mayor. Uh, thank you for allowing us to uh, to speak. What I wanted to do was just. Um, see if we could get a uh. Uh, well, what I see here is that we have it listed as a vote. Um, but I wanted to inform the council that Mr. Revel and I, we've been working on the application for. His alcohol license. And again, this is just to serve beer. It's not any uh, anything other than that. And we um, we wanted to make sure that we had all of his business arrangements. Um, figured out as far as what makes sense so that when we sign this application, that we're doing so uh, in accordance with the law. There was a couple of questions that I had. I haven't been able to get a resolution on. Um, one of them is that uh, under question three on the application, it. It makes, um, it says that uh, first off, it says that it's. If the incom- if incomplete applications cannot be processed. So we didn't want to process this. We didn't want to submit it until I could clarify. That we needed to provide a certificate from a registered land surveyor licensed to do business in state of Georgia showing a scale drawing. Of a proposed location in the shortest straight distance from the proposed license premises to the property line of any residence. Church building, alcoholic treatment facility, school building, education. So the only thing that comes in under this category. Um, is a church building. But when I say church building, this is a building that is owned by a church, but it is not used for religious services. And according to the um, the ordinances, that um, that is differentiated. And so I believe that that would not be considered as part of the um. It would not be counted as part of the of a church or a congregation. Excuse me, a congregation. So my other question, um.
Ms. DeAndre?
Yes.
Uh, that applies only if somebody's applying for an alcohol license. I didn't know he was applying for an alcohol license. Has he applied, DeAndre?
Not yet. That's what she just said that they were working on.
Okay.
Right, that's that's what uh, that's what I'm going through right here.
Okay.
Is the 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 application, it's pretty substantial as far as what has to go into it. So um, the thing is, is that we just, I I wanted to see if if we could get some kind of clarification on that. Um, it says that if it's within a hundred feet, two hundred feet, or three hundred feet. And so um, I believe the location is over three hundred feet from Mr. Revel's business. And um, the other thing was I've never had to request a a licensed surveyor and I was just wondering if there is one that has done that for other businesses. I believe the liquor store that's next to him has been in operation uh, where it has actually recently changed ownership. So I don't know if they had to. Provide it. So I was just asking as far as if if they need, if they needed to, then I I imagine then we would need to and and if we could get.
They don't, they don't have to because they back that's still been there probably thirty-five, forty years. So. You know, there there is a non-conforming use.
Did they change ownership uh, mayor recently? I wonder if they did.
Yeah, that doesn't affect the zoning of the, but they did change uh.
But it doesn't affect the application. Is that correct?
I don't think so. Scott, you think so?
If the ownership changes, then you only supposed to get an application.
Well, you got an application, but the.
Because what your grandfather did.
The distance required. As far as I understand, it was not is not required.
Something I follow you.
Are you, are you asking, Ms. James, are you asking if the distance for separation is required for the liquor store?
She's asking if she has to get a surveyor to do it, I think.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
It's door to door. It's not a crow flies the door to door, I think, that there's the.
It's it's specific in the ordinance. I I can't remember off the top of my head.
State law says door to door by the most common way you would go. So it'd be doors, sidewalk, and.
Right.
Most cities just.
That sounds right, yeah.
Most cities just have those little wheels that roll when they go out.
Yeah, that's, I mean, uh.
Measure it.
I don't know if anybody here in the city that said of liquor, alcohol, is ever hired a surveyor. We just don't check with a rolling measurement tape.
Okay, alright, uh, 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 mayor, that that that's good. That was one of the clarifications because. Otherwise, I could imagine that would be expensive as far as if we had to request for that.
And we can make that measure or your client can make a measure.
Okay, alright, we will uh, we will get that measurement. I think that was one of the last questions that we had. Um, the other thing, again, it was just to verify that Mr. Revel can operate. His his business as far as as a restaurant. Um, and and with that clarification, we should be able to get this thing turned in and then we probably uh, would request to get on the um. Uh, on the uh, next city, um, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. On the next uh, city council meeting um, for vote. But in the meantime, we we'd just like to ask that Mr. Revel be able to continue.
Okay, now he'll, it's gonna be a little time in there. He's got, we got to post his application in the paper. I think for two weeks. Uh, we're gonna get it. That's that's part of it, required to get an alcohol license.
Okay, if that's if that's part of it, uh, you're saying we wouldn't be able to post that ahead of time before the vote?
Well, you can. Like, you may or may not be able to get it in by the next meeting, but you might. I can let you know, we've just got to be run, we've got to run the paper a couple of weeks first.
Okay.
And we've got to go through file, written, background check, and all of that.
Right, I I believe, I believe we've gotten what we need on that as far as that that part done. So, um, I guess, uh, Mr. Revel, I don't know if you have anything that you wanted to say to the council and if there's any questions I could answer, I'd be happy to. But otherwise, our plan is to move forward with the application and and uh, and then hopefully we can get it. Either on the next meeting or perhaps the next one.
Okay, we, uh, I think he's still showing on getting everything in for his business license, regular business license.
The, so with that, the letter that I received from Mr. Mayfield, um. I had responded to that. I I didn't get any feedback from that specifically. I don't know if the the city council or mayor. Uh, was able to see that, but um.
He did send you a letter.
I I did. Yes, I'm saying I did receive the letter from.
Sure, she replied back to me and I shared it with you and DeAndre, but this is the first meeting we've had. So I can reply.
Yeah, okay.
I went into argument. I had no authority to reply.
Okay, alright, I appreciate that. Um, so with that, my contention again is still that that Mr. Revel's. Business license was uh, was never revoked. Um, and the suspension, I, we didn't, we weren't able to see if that was ever voted on by the city council. Um, the last meeting that I attended was, uh, and and the last meeting that was referenced, I didn't see that a vote had occurred. To suspend Mr. Revel's license. Um, so with that, um, my contention is that it's still in existence. The conditions were that there was somebody um, that uh, that was related to him that had presented a lease, but that didn't. Negate the previous business license. The business license that he's still operating under is still the business license that. Um, is recognized by the department of health. There's been no change in ownership of the of the business, so there's not. Any condition that he's violated for that business license. Uh, and and the other part is that um, without the city council voting, then. We believe that he can still operate the the license. Now, if you decided to vote tonight, you know, we would just ask that you allow him to continue until we can. Um, to to finish up with this. Uh, again, we're trying to go through it correctly and and in accordance with the ordinances. So. That's all we're asking for with that.
I think there is still some question about uh, the revocation of the business license back to paper. Um. His business license was revoked and he came to the city council and appealed that and the city council agreed. To have, when he has his business license back.
Well, mayor, I'd like to interrupt right there. Um, unfortunately, you you unilaterally just decided to revoke his license, but it wasn't through the city council. And so based on that, our contention is that he he it wasn't revoked. And because we had some difficulty with communication, we came back and we asked for that. Um, but the letter that I got from Mr. Mayfield, um, again, went back and said that um. He had the that the license had been revoked, but again. You know, our understanding as far as, you know, looking at the ordinance is that the city council has to vote to to revoke or. Or suspend someone's business license and and short of that, then it should still stand. So that's that's our contention with that. I think Mr. Revel's had, he's been operating the business successfully without issue uh, for the last couple of weekends. And so we're just asking to 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 be able to continue that and move forward with with getting the the license.
Now, I was told, I don't know this personally, but I was told this past weekend that his alcohol license premises. And he doesn't have an alcohol license.
I was not informed of that, mayor.
See, I'll have to defer to Mr. Mayfield about maybe what I had.
Are you gonna get anything, Mr. Revel?
I'll, I'll entertain your comments definitely.
You left the meeting last month and we came out of executive session and voted. Authorized me to send the letter, which I did. Telling me failed to live up to the agreement.
Yeah, I saw that.
And then. Given our right to appeal, which they did, and that's why we're back here. So the council has voted in effect to. Affirm the decision to professionarily revoke it.
But they, there wasn't a vote on that.
They did. They keep, we came back out of executive session to vote.
But they voted to send the letter.
They voted to.
Or you to send the letter.
They voted to revoke it and all they did is send a letter giving them, notice it was revoked with conditions that he can work to appeal.
Okay, so there was a vote. Okay, well, with that, then we did send the appeal in and so that's where we are now as far as we appealed. The revocation of that, but I was unaware that the vote had taken place, so that was uh, that was, that was my contention on that.
Were there stipulations, Scott, on him?
I asked him when his appeal. I just asked. The original deal said he wanted an alcohol permit, but then he didn't want one of them, not once or again. So one of my. Conditions was that would be clarified. That little time that has been clarified. I asked him if he wanted to submit a business plan. Show us what affirmative steps he would do to control alcohol, put them alcohol signs up, control the parking lot, some things. To try to show that he wanted to work with the city. And I don't know if any of that's been done or not.
Mr. Michael, I would say that.
It's signs up. It's signs up and I do want to work with the city, so.
And and as you said, I did respond to you and you couldn't respond back because you were not allowed to. So we, and and that's the thing is if there if there is a way that we can communicate, you know, one-on-one, I I. If we don't need to go through your attorney, I know that costs you money and and you know, so.
Open meetings act, we don't have city managers, a little meetings that kind of prohibits us from. I know it's awkward on a meeting once a month, but I don't know where around that.
It might be even made to a different song too. So, if somebody, if somebody, I don't, I agree.
It's a two-way street. The city wants to work with you, but.
I I want to work with the city.
We we are trying. And so that's the thing. It's like the the communication thing. We're back on, again. And whatever we can do, I mean, let me know.
I don't know, I don't remember.
Who I need to, who do I need to talk to so that we can communicate?
Open meetings act, because there's things, but.
Right.
If the council wants to authorize the mayor or the city clerk to, as their designated need to communicate with you. But we still can't have meetings. There's a workshop. Y'all have a workshop before the October twenty eighth meeting, don't you? So there will be another meeting in between now and the next one.
So um, with that, can I ask you if if the city would entertain um, us communicating through um. Your city clerk and providing steps that we have taken and steps that we plan to do? If that would be agreeable?
Talk a lot with me, councilman.
This is my favorite subscriber for you.
Just C C D.
Okay.
In the meantime, until you get an alcohol license, we need to keep alcohol off the property. Making statements to you. If you got your signs up, I know alcohol on the premises.
Yeah, you should have right by there, see them.
Where are all the, I'm not saying.
They own the pole.
I'm not saying they're not up, I just have a seat. Although the door, I don't know property for us.
They own, they own the pole. They, they own the property, but I don't own all the property right there.
We could send a.
I don't own, I don't own all the property on the corner now.
I got a picture you do.
I don't own all the property on the corner. I don't own the whole block.
That one.
And I could, I, and I'm, and I don't control people. I control what going on in my establishment, but I'm not finna go out and confrontation with nobody, because I know that's the quicker way a problem starts, so.
But you aren't willing to tell anybody that comes on that has alcohol that they can't scare.
My establishment, man. I don't control what going on in the streets.
Well, let me suggest, if you've got a thing like that drinking on your premises, it's all right.
I don't own all the premises right there. If you look up my property line, some people own the little store property.
That's right, but you own.
I'm on my property line.
Right, you own the building where you make check, try checking.
Yeah, I own the building. I don't own the whole block. Look.
I.
I don't own the whole corner.
I understand that, but if there's any alcohol in your, right in your building.
The way that.
If there's any alcohol being used while they inside, out, at your building, all around your building.
No.
If I'm asking, I'm saying if that occurs, you need to go tell them to put that alcohol up and leave. You don't want to confront somebody, call the police department. And if you want to start a trouble, that's the best way to do it.
Mayor, we could, and we have talked about this and, and we've, uh, we worked on what a plan, what, what that looks like and any staff that he has that, uh, is working there would be informed to, to do the same thing, so, uh.
Alright, so now you, uh, you just want clarification about the alcohol license, is that right?
Uh, we, we got clarification on some of the issues that were brought up that, that were part of the application, so we've gotten that, those questions answered and, um, the, uh, so I believe that, that we have what we need on that.
Okay, and council members got any plan for?
Well, part of the appeal process that Scott had put in the letter was to provide us with a business plan to, uh, explain some of the ways that she would mitigate some of those issues as far as, you know, the signs is there, but land, putting that, you know, writing that out, that signs are there where the signs are, uh, what the business hours are, what would, what still would be taking of alcohol was on the premises and things of that nature. So that, we had asked for that as a part of the appeal process as well.
Okay, that's something, uh, we, we can get for, we can get for you. We'll, uh, we'll have it, uh, we'll say about getting that up to the, uh.
Is this gonna be a requirement for every business in Woodbury to come up with a business name before they get a business license? Y'all gonna, um, adopt that statute?
Well, any business that, because you went through the appeal process in the past and.
And then, like, them business, y'all gonna, um, have them to bring up business plan? Need to open up a business?
Typically, apart of paperwork, we have to know what your business is and things like that, but if there is an issue with the business, then yes, we would need further information about it. So getting back in April, we had this issue, this appeal, and so then, at our last meeting, we all said that we were gonna put everything in writing, and so that's what we asked for. And again, this is a way to help you, Mr. Rebel, as well, so that everything is in writing, we know what your business is about, you know what our expectations are, and then if something comes up in the future, you can, you can say as well that this is what we agreed to, so you have something to take that's protecting you as well.
I understand that, but what I'm saying though, is we gonna do this for every business in Woodbury. We're not just gonna do that for one business. It gonna be the, the whole Woodbury, every business gonna be required to do.
Any business that is in a similar situation, then they will be required to do the exact same thing, yes.
Yeah, because I don't want to be singled out.
And I think this is like a remedial action, kind of, based on this. And, and I think also for the city, I think it helps that, you know, we've gotten this process in the open and, and I think the city's aware that there's a lot of things that aren't written, so now there's more of a process. So any business that does have an issue has a way of, of medi- of mediating the issue.
Well, we'll get, um, Deondra, um, Mrs. Scott, to send attorney or your letter to let me know, because this is going on too long. You gotta come to some end and, and go forward. Um, with, with the plan is gonna be, you get accepted or not, but that's what we gotta do because this is, this, we prolonged this too long. They didn't go forward with his business with, with, he could agree to what we put on the table, because this is basically, he, he's saying this is appeal for things that have happened to, um, in the past. And so we, we're trying to work with you so you can keep your business open, but we got to put some stipulation there because of the stuff that has happened. And you may not, you may not agree with the stipulation, but because of everything that happened, this is the only way we have, this is the only way to do it right. Um, with everything that's happened, they giving you a chance to stay open. Because we don't overlook, even now with, with your attorney's talking about, they not even need to go back, he going back, back, because that's what we trying to go for, because even now to a technical by law, when you, when that lease contract came, we supposed to be settled, you should be closed, but the fact of that, Mayor Watakanan has in there, when she put January the second, two thousand and twenty-four, we accepted it. It was legal document that she brought with his signature on there, saying that she was the new owner of that place. January the second, two thousand and twenty-four. So once we accepted it, that meant his inspection, according to Mayor Watakanan, was invalid after seven days, if you can look it up. And we also, we sent, so we have also, we done went back and overlooked all of it, so we trying to move forward, Adrian. Mr. Rebel, we trying to move forward, so we got to put something in place. And we gonna put something in place. They will send it to your attorney, to you, and we'll have, I don't know, right now we discuss how many days you have to get back with this, with the city council. If you don't want to agree with that, when I.
I'm not on it.
Well, we not gonna, if you don't want to do it, don't sign. I mean, I can't make you do it. I'm just telling you, well, this is what we going forward, and we, because we got to move forward with it. So, this is what we have discussed, um, because we, we want, you know, we trying to help you two stay open. So we will send it to your attorney, our attorney send it to your attorney, and you can all, you can, you know, look, oh, look at it, because we, obviously, everything, we've been saying we've been going back and forth with this.
I understand that, yeah, I, I understand, I understand that. So if he sent something back to my attorney, he just sent something to my.
No, I just said, we, I said, we would have, I just said it was already there, I said, we would have.
He just did that, um, about fifteen days ago.
No, because he actually, Adrian, I'm saying, we were giving you a statement because tonight was supposed to be a vote to shut you down, and you're not listening. We, this what this vote was about, I'm not doing your legal license. We're not talking about this, this because you didn't apply, you supposed to be, when you brought that in here nine days, you supposed to be at your plan. You did not do that.
Well, I, I really for. I really for if you don't vote to shut my business down. I, I really for just to go ahead and, go ahead and do it.
I agree with that.
Because.
That's what's on the table.
Because I'm, I'm.
Thank you, we'll vote.
Shut my business down, I'm gonna be on the microscope, uh.
We'll vote.
Operating here.
You want us to vote?
We back at the same spot. I'm trying to move forward.
Well, we vote, you say you want us to vote.
I'm trying to move forward, I have to go. I have to go.
Well, Adrian, that's what I just told you. We were, we're gonna have attorney, send your attorney, so we gonna be still, we gonna be right here, keep going back and forth. With the plan, because you never sent us a plan. You was in that letter, to your attorney standing outside. There was, she, in that letter, you spoke, when you came out and hit the field.
I'm gonna explain it about that.
Mr. Rebel, let down the warning, it's bad.
But see, that's why we here now, because you always said that. He say this, she say this, so we starting to agree that we gonna put everything on paper. Not, we gonna put everything on paper, so that's what we said, putting everything for you on paper. So, with that being said, our attorney reached out to your attorney, so we gonna have him to reach back out to your attorney again, because you was supposed to be in that letter. He said, uh, bring your plan. What with your plan, also with your sign. When you, when you, you had, nine, what happened in days ago? Ten days, that was supposed to happen.
Well, councilor, in fact, can just.
Uh-huh.
We, we did, we did send the appeal back, and they, uh, part of the letter was an invitation to meet, and I requested a meeting, but we didn't get any response back on the meeting, so we did what we could as far as, uh, Mr. Rebel did get the signs up, and then, you know, I thought today would be where we could come together again to figure out what the plan is to get this completed. And I, I think we're there as far as, I think, hopefully, what we can do is get this too, as you said, a completion, so Mr. Rebel can, can move on with his business.
And that's when I, that's when I just said, we have attorney to go ahead and put everything in writing, we gonna have to keep going back and forth.
Uh, Scott, uh, can you just send a letter to Ms. Jenkins, clarify to her what's required for him to get his alcohol license?
We're not talking about that alcohol license, we're talking about his business.
Business license, what? I have trouble understanding what the problem with business license is.
But that's what we're, we're gonna move for. We'll have Mrs. Scott to send the letter to you with the plan, with the city plan.
Uh, what is that plan going to be?
We haven't put it together yet. It'll be the same basic. What was the question?
Uh. What are you gonna clarify for, Mr. Rebel?
I just explained some of the things that we want to clarify and write.
I don't know what I can add in my last letter. But since, you know, I don't know what it will do, that the last letter didn't really say.
Yeah. Was she, was she usually saying that, because you did not respond back to her, that, um, they didn't know what to do? Uh, that's what I'm saying, there, I said, this will be, this regular will be the final letter, that once we have everything with the plan, when you send it to, to, to her, so we gonna have, we gonna have to keep going back, back and, back and forth. We let them, because we asked him to, we asked him to put the plan, so since he did bring the plan, so now we'll put, we'll put.
I can explain my plan.
We'll put the plan. It gotta be in writing. You should have, that's what I'm saying, you should have let your attorney send it to us.
I didn't know that was required.
Get it at your attorney, she standing there.
I thought it was a.
You're going to fold it, okay, go. I would suggest, I would suggest that you just get with your attorney and let her work this out between the city council board and Mr. Mayfield.
Our understanding is all, all work with, uh, Mr. Mayfield.
And the city.
And, okay.
The letter says, "The end result, I hope, will be clearly articulated, written plan that spells out the needs and expectations of all authorities to use moving forward."
So that's what we need, that's what we need to follow back to.
And that goes both ways, that's, that's us too, what can we expect from one another, so. I think it's in the book.
Yes, we, we hope so. I, I think we can, we can write out a plan and, and hopefully that's efficient. Uh, that, that is somewhat open-ended though, as far as on, on our side. But we're gonna try to meet your, your expectations on that, but it is, it, it's hard to, to quantify all of that as far as what the plan is. But I think based on the testimony that we've had, I, I can, we can come up with something, so I, I hope that will work. Thank you.
I want to emphasize as well that, yes, if we can, even if it's not a perfect plan, if you can just show us that you all are trying to put things in writing, putting the work together, then if there are any issues with that, we would explain that, you know, and we have done that in the past. So give us what you can, and then there needs to be something additional, we can communicate that.
Alright, thank you, Rebel.
Okay, our next last item on the agenda is, uh, comment, councilman.
You may just have a little comment.
Any comment?
Just a comment.
Not sure, public comment? Public comment, anybody signing up?
Mr. Cooper, maybe we can have here.
Can I make a comment, uh, earlier?
Question.
Yeah, just a short comment.
Okay, okay. In prior meetings, talked about good very good. There was a question that was brought up, the prior zoning has changed from agriculture, conservation to multifamily, high-density residential. And my challenge was, it, it was done improperly, was not done by due diligence. Procedures were not followed, there were no signs, no advertising, and it was changed internally, frankly, by either the mayor or the county, I don't know who. And if you like, these are read, the ordinance requirements and procedures. And I simply ask that the council or somebody investigate, look at, and manage to see if there's any record anywhere, if those procedures were followed. And if it did not follow, I'm sorry, what this man right here said, that you have no ordinance, well, there is an ordinance. Lawsuit says, if you pass something, you, you do it to property, you do it again. And that's what I'm requesting, if they did not follow the property due diligence that's required by law, posting signs, putting it in the newspaper, and having other meetings concerning the zoning changes was reverted back to the prior ordinance, which is agriculture, conservation, and all one. And I simply, there's no vote, and you had that meeting, it just, nobody said what was going to be done. I would simply like somebody to investigate and have to pass a meeting thirty days, you gotta vote for it or whatever. Simply say that vote, or change, or follow the procedures, or it was not. He said, nothing was said to do that in that meeting, so I'm simply asking that the council look into that, because if that procedure was not followed, it's still conservation and agriculture. It's not both family high-density dwell, which they're saying it is now. So, I'll leave that up to you, Ron, and, you know, see, I simply think that the zoning should go back to what it was, if there's a change, then it should be reapply and submitted properly, and go through due diligence and proper procedure.
Well, that's what we're gonna do, Mike, that's the reason, that's the reason for. We've got straightened out, that's what we're gonna do, but I haven't. Any, you know, public comment? Alright, uh, council member, you have a comment? Come on in. Here. David. Okay. Alright, uh, we will not close, though, open meeting, we're going to executive session now for discussion of legal protection. Problem. We're going to executive session now at eight-thirty.
I made a note.
Not anymore?
I made a note there.
Second. Okay, I'm hoping second, go to executive session, all right? Okay, we ready?